Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, April 21st. I'd ask everyone to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." [Music] Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We move on to the adoption of the previous council minutes. Could I have a motion for the adoption of that set of minutes? Councillor Thiessen.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve the minutes, but with one slight amendment. Just going over the roundtable notes, I was included in the MGA review and as much as I would have loved to have been there, I cannot take credit for actually being there. We were well represented by Councillors Radverne and McLean, and so if that could be changed, I could approve the minutes.
Okay, great. So a motion to approve the minutes with that one note. Any other notes that we wanted to catch before we adopt that set of minutes? I don't see anybody ringing in with anything else, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then we have meeting minutes from the special council meeting on April 15th. Can I have a motion for that set of minutes? Councillor Rice.
I move that council adopt the minutes of the special council meeting of April 15th.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any errors or omissions that we need to catch in that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That takes us to the adoption of the agenda. Could I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt agendas presented with one addition, 8.3, to appointment to Pursuit of Excellence.
Great, thanks very much, Councillor McLean. So a motion to adopt the agenda with one addition. The additional item is item 8.3, and that's appointment to the Pursuit of Excellence Committee. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation for the agenda? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. So that handles all those procedural things, and we get into the fun stuff. And we start off with the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any community-related matter. We do, from time to time, have delegations that let us know in advance that they're coming, and we have one of those tonight. Mr. Wald from our QP local. Randy, would you like to join us at the presenter's table? I believe you're speaking on the Day of Morning where workers killed or injured on the job. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Given, council members, and city administration. I'll start by introducing myself. I'm Randy Wald, president of the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 787. The local is here again, as in previous years, to bring awareness to April 28th, the National Day of Morning for Workers Killed or Injured on a Job. The concept of the Day of Morning originated from QP and the National Health and Safety Committee of QP, who recommended the creation of a remembrance day for workers killed or injured on a job back in 1984. The Day of Morning has become very widespread in Canada and around the world, led by unions and labour councils, and often with the participation of municipalities such as the City of Grand Prairie. And at this time, the local thanks to the city for their continuing support in bringing awareness to this important date of April 28th. Also, the local at this time length wants to recognise the City of Grand Prairie for their diligence in having a strong health and safety policy, along with joint health and safety committees throughout the organisation that our members participate in. This evening, I brought with me, behind me, the Day of Morning flag. As you can see, there is a canary in the cage. QP proposed and adopted the canary in a cage as the international recognised symbol for the Day of Morning. The history of it is, in the 19th century, miners would take a caged canary into the mines, with them being canaries are more sensitive to airborne hazards and absence of oxygen in the air than humans are. So when the canaries were overcome or showed signs of distress, it was a sign to quickly evacuate the mine. So that's, QP adopted that symbol. There are no canaries in the workplace today, and our workplaces are much safer with improved health and safety laws, but there are still workers that lose their lives. And in 2013, in Alberta alone, there was 188 workers who died from workplace injury or illnesses. So that's why April 28th is set aside, so we can all remember, in memory, remember the 188 Alberta workers and workers right around the world who have died from workplace injury or work illness in 2013. And it also to strengthen the resolve to establish safer conditions in the workplace for all works, because it's as much a day to remember the workers that have passed on as is a call for to protect the living. So to end my, in closing, the local again would request that April 28th be proclaimed as the International Day of Morning by the City of Grand Prairie, and we would encourage all employees to observe a minute of silence on April 28th. And the local is also respectfully requesting, with city council's approval, to hold a flag-raising ceremony at City Hall starting at 11:30 a.m., 11:30 a.m. on April 28th.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Randy. A pleasure to have you here again, as always. Were there any questions for the delegation or comments? This is a regular piece of business. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I want to thank you, Randy, for coming forward, and the number you said, 188, that's a big number for nowadays in Alberta alone, and it's very important because our city's the youngest in Canada.
Yes.
And a lot of times, a lot of those deaths are of young people coming into the workforce. I just wanted to say thank you for coming here.
Thank you very much.
I don't see anybody else in the queue already, and so we deal with delegation business typically at the end of our agenda, as we do in previous years. So I'm sure council will pretty likely be making a motion to support your request. We have, every other time I think QP's made it, we certainly appreciate the partnership and the focus on workplace safety that we have with our unions. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So, as I said, this is the delegation portion of our agenda. It is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any matter that they'd like to bring to council's attention. We did have one other delegation that said that they were going to attend. Are there any representatives from CN here tonight? Great, okay, Mr. Nicoletti, come on up. You're next. Well, that sounds like a game show. So another delegation that had let us know that they were going to attend was CN. And so Mr. Nicoletti is a representative of CN Railway. I understand he's the risk management officer, and to bring council a little bit of an update. Mr. Nicoletti, welcome.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of CN Rail, we'd just like to thank the City of Grand Prairie for their commitment to Rail Safety Week, which is next week. Traditionally, this is actually conducted mostly by the CN Police. Unfortunately, they're all tied up this week, so they've asked me to attend in their place. Basically, they just wanted me to come and to thank you for your commitment and just to explain that Rail Safety Week traditionally is basically an educational campaign between the railways across Canada, the Railway Association of Canada, and the public and the media to just better educate everyone on the dangers of, you know, rail operations, especially in urban populations such as Grand Prairie. I know you guys have quite a few crossings in this town, actually more so in Grand Prairie than any other city in my territory. So it's definitely very important to us every year. There's hundreds of incidents across our system, and it's very hard on everyone, on the families of those who are involved, including our crews as well and first responders from both CN and emergency responders as well. So for more information, please feel free to check out www-operationlifesaver.ca. There's some information and resources and tools there to better promote both, you know, in schools or just to the general public. You know, if you want to link to our website there, that's more than welcome to as well. So that's basically all I had.
Great, well, thanks very much for coming tonight, and thanks for CN's work on Rail Safety Week. I do see one councillor had a question or a comment for you. Councillor Rice.
Is there not something, aren't you doing something in educational, something in Edmonton on Thursday?
I'm not sure. I can check and get back to you, but usually CN Police take this week, and they're in a lot of schools, and they do usually, there usually is a media release as well. So I'm not exactly sure what they have planned, but the inspector from Edmonton was the one who actually asked me to attend today, so I can definitely follow up with him and...
No, it's fine. I just, you know, something in the back of my mind, they're having something, I think, a fairly large thing in Edmonton on Thursday. So they're obviously serious about getting this word out.
Yes, the program itself is about 30 years old now, actually, just over 30 years old. And it has, we have seen a remarkable decrease in incidents since we launched the program. So we're definitely thrilled with the progress there and want to continue with it.
So obviously, safety doesn't mean relocating the tracks.
Unfortunately, no. It's a little more difficult than that, but, you know, the best we can all coexist together.
Let's see, another councillor, Councillor Logan.
Thank you very much for appearing here and bringing this to our attention. It's nice to have a campaign of this nature. It's also nice to seek out allies in that sort of campaign, and I'm wondering if in future campaigns you would adopt the same practices that QP and several other organisations in the community have had of coming and requesting that the city proclaim a day or a week of that focuses on your concern, and that helps to get it around, people pay attention to that.
Absolutely. I know that we've put the invitation out to many municipalities throughout the country, and as far as I know, at least in my territory, which is Northern British Columbia and Western Alberta, Grand Prairie is the first city to actually take us up on this offer. So we're definitely very grateful for your commitment.
Thanks very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue, Mr. Nicoletti, unless you had anything else for council?
No, I think that's all I had, but thank you so much for having me.
Thanks very much for coming forward. Appreciate it. So we are still in the delegation portion of our agenda. As I said, this is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward. You don't have to have made an appointment. If you came tonight and you were passionate about something that you want to share with council, you're more than welcome, as long as it wasn't the subject of a public hearing, which we're going to be dealing with a little bit later on in our agenda. So is there anybody else in the community that wanted to come forward?
Motion carries as well. We also have item eight point two, a land use bylaw amendment, C twelve sixty dash eight. Look for introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. C twelve sixty dash eight is an amendment to the land use bylaw. The proposed amendment would change the zoning of part of lot seventy-one, block R Y L, Plan five eight one four N W, from U R, urban reserve, to R S, small lot residential, and R M, medium density residential. The rezoning is in accordance with the Riverstone outline plan, and the recommendation is that bylaw C twelve sixty dash eight to amend the land use bylaw be given first reading, and that Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, at six thirty P M, in city council chambers be established as the date, time, and location of the public hearing.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for first reading? Counselor Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C twelve sixty dash eight, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. As with the previous, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I move that Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty fourteen, at six thirty P M, in city council chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion as to date, time, or location? I don't see any, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That brings us to our added agenda item, eight point three, public member appointment to the Pursuit of Excellence Committee. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council appoint Lee Swayall to the Pursuit of Excellence Committee for the remainder of the mandated term to December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So I understand this is the result of a vacancy. We had a member that moved away, and so council has the opportunity to fill that vacancy with this appointment. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote on appointing this public member to the committee. That motion carries as well. That handles all of our reports business and takes us into committee business, starting with nine point one, Arts Development Committee. Counselor Tarrant, did you handle that meeting, or did somebody step in for it? Counselor Thiessen, great. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I move that council receive the minutes of the Arts Development Committee, held April fourth, twenty fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes?
If I may, just to clarify what we talked about at the Arts Development Committee. It was mostly a housekeeping item. We had had one member that had applied for grants, and based on a lack of, I guess, committee members there, we couldn't meet quorum, and there was conflict of interest. So we just postponed it to make it fair for all the other participants, too, and just so they wouldn't lose out on a technicality. We also furthered discussions about looking further into our Art and Culture Master Plan, and if we are potentially doing enough to help with the Arts and Culture scene in Grand Prairie, if we can grow it, if maybe we need more funding sources, maybe we need to relook at our strategy on how we disperse funds and stuff like that. And we've set two meeting dates for the future, one in June and one in September.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. For Thiessen, just a question. I see on the individual project funding, the request was fifteen hundred and the award was fourteen hundred. Was that just a mistake, or was there just that much left in the fund, or... Yeah, what happened there?
That's about the question, Counselor Radver. That's all that we had in the meeting.
So we had, I think it was, six original applicants, and we just took our total monies and we divided it equally amongst all the applicants, and see it all applied for the same amount, so.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and would take us to nine point two, the Community Growth Committee from April eighth. Was that you, Counselor O'Toole? Counselor O'Toole?
Okay, I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held April eighth, twenty fourteen.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or missions that we need to catch?
I can just make a couple of comments, if you don't mind.
Sure, please.
We had Mr. Dan Wong, representative from Barristills, Leners, and Ketchum, come into committee and asked that the administration look at bylaw C twelve oh six, and that's the land use bylaw, regarding some landscaping requirements and parking stalls permitted, parking stalls in construction, so.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the minutes? Counselor Rice?
So he came and asked, so what did you do with it?
Administration is going to look forward and look into it.
And get back to your committee?
With possible changes.
Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, nobody else ringing in on the minutes, I'll call for the vote on adopting them. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, you had one piece of business coming up.
And I have one more. Nine point two point one, I move that the council enter into negotiations with the Grand Prairie Public School Board for the construction of a new school district head office as part of a larger development project on the York Hotel Germaine Park site. In speaking to this motion, the school district submitted this proposal in response to a request for information for development proposals on this site issued by the city. The school district is interested in the construction of an office tower with the district using thirty thousand square feet to relocate their new head office into and from its existing site.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Logan?
Yes, we all understand that school boards and school districts in Alberta are always terribly short of funds. In what way will we see this development project provide some sort of revenue for the city of Grand Prairie?
I would like to have administration answer that question. It's a fairly lengthy question and a fairly lengthy answer.
Sure. Well, I think there's certainly two parts to it. The first is the school board, in their submission, did identify that they have dollars, capital dollars set aside for this purpose, some from reserve dollars and some from borrowing that they intend to do. So their portion, they have cash, essentially. I think the second part is that the intent of the negotiations and the discussion at this point has been to leverage that investment from the school board to encourage the private sector to build more than just the school board offices. So the ultimate benefits to the downtown would both be the activity generated by the school board and any other uses on the site, adding to the vibrancy of downtown, but then also the tax income that would come, the property tax income that would come from the portion of whatever building was built that was privately owned. So there's sort of two levels to that. I don't know if the Director of Community Living, if I stole all your thunder, if there's anything you'd like to add? So I think that was a yes, I did. So Counselor Logan, is that kind of... Any further discussion or debate?
I guess also, we're looking at a building that would be the tenant, and other tenants would be in that building. So it's not just the school board office that will be in a simple statement. We're looking for other people to be into this building as well as taxation revenue.
Counselor McLean?
Mayor Given, I just want to say I think it's a very positive approach, and the previous councils on to this one of revitalizing our downtown, and if something nice comes of this on this vacant lot, I think that would be extremely beneficial to downtown.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate? Don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. I'm looking for one more, counsel. Somebody's vote didn't register. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, is there anything else you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
Just also that we did have a gentleman come in, and we had an approval, approved a development variance on a proposed eight-plex site in the Avondale area, and there'll be some more coming to council over that area as well, as administration goes through the process.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. We'd move on to nine point three, the Council Committee of the Whole from April eighth. Is there a council member that'd like to make a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council see the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held April eighth, two thousand fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? It looks like everything is in order, and it must be, because nobody's ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, you want to handle that one item of business?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council approve policy three fifteen for community group funding.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the policy, or would... Maybe we could have a brief introduction from administration, just an overview of the intent of the policy from the Director of Community Living. Mr. Roth?
Thanks, Your Worship. The policy three fifteen provides for a framework for community group grants that the city would administer and distribute to community groups. Also includes processes for, or a framework for how process would be established for F C S S related funding would be distributed to community agencies.
Thanks very much, Mr. Roth. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and would take us to nine point four, the Community Living Committee from April eighth. Counselor Radver, was that your set of minutes? Thank you, Mayor Given.
Yes, they are. So we'll start with council. I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held April eighth, two thousand fourteen.
Thanks, Counselor Radver. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counselor Radver?
Thank you. I would move the council direct administration to utilize funds from the Transit Terminal Capital Plan budget to review and update the Transit Master Plan. The context of this motion would be that our present master plan is a two thousand seven timeframe. It is outdated with respect to population, areas to cover, and technology. I think we feel, and given that it's a council priority transit, I think this is an important step to take a look at our Transit Master Plan and look for the future. I think the Terminal Capital has some monies there. We're putting that on hold pending the direction that the master plan and council decides, and so that would be the source of funding. And I think it was about, I think around a hundred thousand was what, probably we won't know until we seek an R F P or process in terms of getting some help with retired men to do that plan. But I think that gives the context. I think, obviously, we're looking for five to ten years down in the future, so hopefully this plan will get it soon, then it'll give us that sense of direction. Thank you.
Counselor Radver, a discussion or debate? Questions and comments? Counselor Rice?
Keep using the terminology terminal. Is it a capital budget? It's only the capital, but there's no mention of terminal in that. Just plain capital budget. All right. Yeah.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Radver, can you manually turn your mic on if you're going to respond? Sorry, Counselor Radver, hit the mic on button rather than the request to speak.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that was the, they did mention that specific, but I think the motion is better to be broader. Thank you.
You're adding the word terminal.
I'm open. What do you think, Gary?
Sorry, let's just get an answer on this one point. Mr. Roth?
The capital plan certainly had referred to downtown transfer terminal, and that's where the funding source is, is in capital and the word identified as terminal. Either way, it is funded from the capital plan. It was the intent.
Counselor Rice?
Whatever. I guess one of the things that concerns me is the terminology of the R F Ps that we're going to, I assume we're going to do an R F P. We tend to tinker with it, and the end result is it ends up similar to, you know, rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. I guess I would like to see an R F P that challenges to find, identify solutions instead of, you know, put a bus here and move that one to thirty minutes and cut that one to twenty and tinkering with it. So I just ask that consideration be given when, when looking at the R F P that we challenge responders to look at that.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor Radver, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Counselor Rice. That was exactly the sentiment and the direction that we gave administration at the committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I see Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I look forward to this happening proceeding. I sat in on the meeting when Jason was with Transit that was speaking for the city, and there is some money allocated already, I believe, when we had our one area terminal. There's over a million dollars, I do believe. I don't know the exact numbers, so there is money, and a lot of positive things came out of that about maybe the city's not looking at one terminal. It could be a three, and they're going to come back to us after they do this. But I also like the initiatives that they're going to do from that, is putting heating in some of these areas for the winter time with young families and waiting for the bus. So I think we're going to see some real good stuff come out of this, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Rice?
Last week, the province announced a second round of green trip funding. Do you know when, does anybody know when the requests are like... I would hope we have time to do an R F P before that deadline comes up, or are we just going to apply for something generic?
Mr. Roth, do you have any information from administration?
So as I understand it, the second round of green trip funding is for projects that are of capital nature and have to already be in a transit master plan. So we're looking at our current transit master plan and looking for opportunities where we can seek out green trip funding.
So if we wanted to, we could apply for the single transit terminal that is in our transit master plan, or we can redo the transit master plan and, you know, identify capital priorities. Counselor Thiessen?
Actually, thanks, Mayor Bill. I was actually going to say the exact same thing, like our master plan isn't expired yet, and I think that there's ample time for us to be able to apply for different sources of funding, so.
Thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Radver, there's another transit motion.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks for the help with the buttons. I would move that council endorse the Canadian Urban Transit Association Transit Vision two thousand forty. This is a document developed by that organization, has twenty-seven strategic directions, has six themes. Those themes are putting transit at the center of communities, revolutionizing service, focus on customers, greening transit, ensuring financial health, and strengthening knowledge. So this vision certainly supports a more effective, efficient, utilized public transit system as we move forward. So that would kind of be the basic principles that we would incorporate, use as we move forward with our transit master plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radver. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote on endorsing that set of principles and vision. I'll call for the vote now. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council appoint Ms. Tori Firstonworth, Mr. Jeffrey Shorowannick, and Ms. Jody Hagan as weed inspectors under the Weed Control Act of Alberta. So I think it was last meeting, we had the pest inspectors appointed, so we're following up today with our weed inspectors for two thousand fourteen. These are both annual motions. That allows us to carry on with our work.
Counselor Radver, any discussion or debate on the first of these two motions, this set of motions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radver?
And the second part of the recommendation was the council appoint the Community Living Committee as an independent appeals panel to determine appeals and notices under the Weed Control Act of Alberta.
Thanks, Counselor Radver. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Radver, I think you have the last piece of business.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council enter into a capital partnership with the Grand Prairie Catholic School District for the construction of a fieldhouse space at the new school that will be constructed in Royal Oaks. Administration came back with a report and had had discussions with the Catholic School District as they are building a new school in Royal Oaks. They looked at community needs and have recommended that this is the type of facility, partnership that would work for both the school district and our community. Fieldhouse, council is well aware, the fieldhouse has been very popular and much utilized at the East Link Centre for some programming, some unstructured drop-in birthday parties, and obviously it can be used as a second gym for the school as there as well. So that, for those who are listening, we've had different partnerships with schools over the years. We've added community gyms to a couple of schools in the district, in the city. We've also entered into a recent partnership with the next public school to provide some office space for community groups or not-for-profits. So this is another way to partner with the school district to support children in the school, but also the community more broadly. This also provides a facility in that quadrant of the city that I think that will be very appropriate and help those communities. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radver. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm looking forward to voting for this, but I'm also, this is provincial jurisdiction, I think in a lot of ways, and our city being the youngest in Canada, some lapses have been made where some schools are bursting, bursting, bursting at the seams, and they need to be, I know they're building more schools, but they need to be not maybe putting it on property taxes. And they actually, provincial stand up and come forward on more issues and be forward-thinking. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and then Counselor Radver, I think there's a second part to that.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approval of any capital contributions towards a partnership with the Grand Prairie Catholic School District for the construction of a fieldhouse space at the new school that will be constructed in Royal Oaks be delayed until two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. This is just something that I guess Gary has worked out with the school district, city and school district, in terms of when those monies will be needed. They won't be needed this year or next, but rather two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. It just, I guess, formalizes that that's when it will be considered in our capital budget.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Radver. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. Counselor Radver, was there anything else from that set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to let those not on the committee or not attending today, there was a third motion relative to this item, and that was to refer this budget, this capital request, refer it to our two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen capital budget plan deliberations, budget deliberations. Other things that, relative to our committee, we did receive Supping Stones Daycare and Parent Link Centre report, an update on programs that they have offered with the help of city funding, and also the Grand Prairie Grief Support Organization also attended to give a similar update. And the only other thing that relative to the Transit Vision two thousand forty, we did ask administration to review current plans to ensure alignment with the Transit Vision two thousand forty and report back on recommendations as required. So I guess until we implement and, yeah, operationalize a new plan, I think that we should still use these basic principles as we're looking at our present plan. That was the intent there. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radver. I think that handles all of our delegate, or excuse me, all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence, and so that would take us to our delegation business. We had two presentations. The first was from the Q P local, and we'd start with that. Counselor Logan is first in the queue.
Thank you. I would, I was pleased to see the presentation from Q P, and it's become an annual thing, asking for recognition of workers injured or killed on the job in Alberta and with Q P specifically, but I think it's more general than that. So I would like to move that we have council proclaim April twenty eighth as the day of mourning for workers injured or killed on the job, and that we have a flag raising ceremony at City Hall.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Certainly, council has historically been very supportive, and I would continue to be so. I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We had one other delegation that attended. That was our presenters from C N. I think that business is being handled. Rail Safety Week is going ahead next week, but I would look for a motion maybe to receive for information. Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we receive the kind of delegation presentation by the C N Railway for information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radver. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. We had, and I believe that handles all of our delegation business. We had no notices of motion tonight. Would take us council member reports from our agencies, boards, and commissions. We'd start with Counselor Logan and the Community Futures of Grand Prairie and Region. Counselor Logan?
Wait, button for this thing. Yes, I actually have attended three meetings of Community Futures, but this is the first time I'm reporting on it. We met on April sixteenth. The Community Futures Board includes representatives from the county and from the city, and part of the idea of this partnership is to offer expertise, analysis, information, financial assistance to organizations, individuals who are moving forward with economic development initiatives or specialized projects that they're having difficulty getting funding for. I find it an exciting board to be able to contribute my own meager resources to, and I just wanted to bring the attention of council to that.
Very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor Clayton, you had Grand Prairie Sports Council.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The Grand Prairie Sports Council recently met. The committee is obviously in its infancy stages. At this point, we've approved a logo, got some promotional material started. The executive director has attended a provincial forum for meeting with other groups and organizations to sort of get some solid groundwork started for the sport council. We have, last meeting, we formed our committees. There's a sports big committee as well as a marketing and hosting committee that will do with events and marketing in town, and one will specifically assist organizations in the community that are looking to put bid proposals in to provincial and national and possibly international organizations. As well, the committee had a couple documents come forward for assistance, and we're working with those organizations. So the council already has been quite active and will continue to grow and be very busy, but so far I think things are going very well.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Thanks for that first update from the sport council. Counselor Thiessen, you had library board?
Meeting, I go to library board meeting the day after, and this one was actually quite jam-packed, full of lots of good stuff. Things that we discussed at the library board level was the expansion space, getting dates under wraps, and finishing off those contracts with the developers. We then shifted into looking at our financials, which look really, really well. In fact, it should be coming to Community Living Committee meeting near you sometime soon. In fact, it should be coming to Community Living Committee meeting near you sometime soon. After that, the board discussed the development of a two-year service plan. And this is just a strategy that we're developing in conjunction with, I guess, the province and Miriam Mannick, who's acting as a consultant to the project, on how the library is going to deliver services that are relevant to today's, to today's day and times, and also how we can network within the other library organizations. And speaking of that as well, this weekend, myself and Ms. Curry will be heading down to Jasper for the Alberta Library Conference. So hoping to get a lot of learning and, I guess, more experience through the process of that, and really looking forward to it.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. I'm sure you'll enjoy it. It's a fantastic conference. Counselor Tool, you had Northern Alberta Elected Leaders.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the Friday, April 11th, I drove up to Grimshaw, Alberta, and we toured the Mile Zero Regional Multiplex. We were welcomed by Mayor Bob Regal. And some of the topics that we discussed, we were there all day, was the east-west connector support. That's in the northern Sunrise County, Grimshaw-Bourwin Community Health Centre, and once again, northern Sunrise. Highways 688 and 986. There was concerns about extending into B.C., and we're looking, they're looking for some support from the northern part of the province to convince the people in B.C. that this is a very suggestive highway that to be looked at. We also looked at local bridge funding, resource road funding. They want to possibly see that road go in from possibly Peace River to Fort McMurray. And that not only a road, but also a corridor that could be used for pipelines and electricity or power. And then we also had a report on the grain and pipeline updates regarding CN Rail and some of the transportation issues there. Later in the afternoon, we had Director of Primary Healthcare Branch out of Edmonton do a discussion on some of the incentives that they're trying to get doctors up into the peace, North Peak's country. And that was pretty much it, and I drove away.
Great. Thanks.
I left Grand Prairie. It was sunny. I had to get my sunglasses. By the time I got to Ryecroft, I was looking for my winter jacket. But other than that, we're good.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tool. I think that handles all of our council member reports. And so we just finish up with our roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Edburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a few of the, I guess, commitments, council commitments that I've had past a couple of weeks. April 10th, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Monthly Meeting, and then also the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie Art Auction, next day or two days after. A very well-attended and successful event. Good community support, again, as it is a major fundraiser for the gallery. So I was pleased to see that it was such a success. 14th, I attended the afternoon community discussion on homelessness with a few other of my council colleagues. I think there were 60, 60-plus from representatives, interested parties from the community who participated in providing feedback that will all be used to develop a community plan to end homelessness for Grand Prairie. That would be the next step. They've had different consultations. This was, I think, the final consultation before working on a draft. Ultimately, that will come to committee and council. I had my quarterly meeting with the city manager on the 15th. On the 17th, we had Pursuit of Excellence, and then I joined Bob for, I think it was about five different tenders that day. So it was a busy meeting. Matter of fact, we had standing room only in room 203 for those tenders. Last night, I attended the opening ceremonies. I joined Mayor Given. I attended the opening ceremonies for the Junior National Rocketball Championships. And I was very proud to be there. I was very proud of our community. I was very proud of our community members. If you'll recall, Leanne Buller, I believe, came to committee and said this was happening and mentioned that her son had been the lead in initiating this application, went through the Alberta governing body, and then presentation to the national. And to see it all together, to see 55 athletes there, parents, coaches, community members, just was a, was a special moment. And it just reminded me that, and we often say this to people, but one community member can make a difference. And that was this young man who had played in these national championships as a youth. He wanted it to happen. He saw our facility as being second to none in Canada and said, "Why not Grand Prairie?" And he solicited, as we all do, a family member to help him and some friends. And last night was the start of that. That championship goes all week, so if people are interested in popping by, see some fine rocketball. And then today, I attended the Crystal Centre Media Conference where exciting news about our concert on Homecoming Weekend, August 2nd. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edburn. Counselor Tant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On the 10th, I was able to attend a tour of the Cairn on the boulevard with other members of council, and it was really exciting to see the project taking off. And now they're starting to see some people housed there, and so it's great to see that affordable housing is being addressed in the city with that project. On the 17th, I attended the airport board meeting, and it was great to get an update on some of the development plans that are happening there with the expansion of the runway and some of the longer-term plans that are seeing the airport expand there. Perhaps one of the highlights the last couple of weeks was on the 17th, I got to attend, I was invited to attend grade six classroom in Penson, in Penson School in Grovedale, and got to talk about local government. It was great to see so many willing, kids willing to learn and to experience what, what we actually do here. And it was also interesting to note how, you know, how we really function as a region as although they, they live in the MD of Greenview, you know, they're quite intimately connected with, with the city of Grand Prairie. And so it was great to talk about some of those regional challenges. And, you know, even at grade six, they were willing and keen to learn about, you know, how, how things function. So one of the highlights.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tant. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have one thing to announce this week, and it's, it's not really council-related, but I did want to make note that the SPCA currently hired a new executive director, and we've met, had one meeting with her, and I think that the organization is in great hands. And I think that we look forward to the future of the SPCA, so I'd like to welcome her.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Tool?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. In the last couple of weeks, I was doing deputy mayor role, and I want to make note that I attended 22 events. Couple highlights that I'd like to bring up was the proclamation reading for the month of April at Wildrose Manor for the Parkinson Association of Canada, and that was a real eye-opener. I got to do a little sing-along, and, but it's a, it's a disease that's affecting a lot of people. And there's a good group of people here that are educators and counselors, and I'd like to make sure that they get looked after in the future, if there's any possible way. Very forward-thinking people. I also attended the Airport Commission meeting. We had a, an overview by a couple of the staff members at the airport on the vision, the growth, 10-year plan, 20-year plan, of what the terminal could possibly look like, the property out there, the runway expansion and parking lots, and it's just sort of a rundown there. And this last weekend, there was MMA event. The Combat sports commission was in full force, and it was a success, and there was probably 1,200 attendees in the stands. Event athletes came as far as way of Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, Manitoba, and all throughout Alberta, and there was three fighters from Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tool. Counselor Rice?
I too attended, I attended the grade six social studies class, Ms. Kendall's class at Holy Cross School, and absolutely fascinating hour, and their grasp of the issues and their familiarity with some of the biggest issues is absolutely astounding. It was, it was a really great experience, and I thank Ms. Kendall for providing the opportunity. I attended at the airport meeting as well, and again, found that very interesting and very informative, and their plans, and to being able to discuss some of the frustrations when you're dealing with Navcan and some federal rules that appear not to make sense, and yet the airport is bound by them. And the numbers of people that go through that airport are absolutely phenomenal. It just is absolutely amazing, and I guess one has to think back to commend the council of the day when the feds came and said, "Okay, city, you want to take over this airport, or do we close it?" When you think of how disadvantaged Grand Prairie would be without that airport, it's, it's unfathomable. So the numbers are just absolutely incredible. And I attended the snow removal policy workshop, which was probably one of the most traumatic, gut-wrenching days I've spent in a while. And I also attended the announcement of the April 2nd concert as part of the homecoming weekend for the city's 100th anniversary. And we'll be having a 100th anniversary meeting tomorrow. It's just incredible the way the community has picked this up. And there are pretty much events planned every weekend, all during the spring and early fall to celebrate the city's anniversary. And I would ask the mayor if you've received any written confirmation on the legacy project yet.
We have from at least two of the partners, but not all of the ones that we're seeing.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rice, that was everything?
That was it.
Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I too attended many of the events that other councillors attended, and just to go over top of all of them, I attended the tour of the Cairns building briefly. I got pulled away to another meeting about halfway through the tour. It was still quite the tour. Then I attended some tender openings here at City Hall for some mowers, backhoes, floor scrubbers, power sweepers, you know, the standard stuff that we need to tender out every once in a while, but it's nice hanging out with Bob for an afternoon. I also attended the 34th Annual Art Auction. It's quite an event, as Counselor Edburn stated. It was amazing. I myself took a little bit of pride home with me. My wife had put in painting into that for the, for the Prairie Art Gallery, and she quoted me that she wanted to get about 150 for the sale of it, but she only marked it at 75 for how they were paying out the artists. In the end, her painting went for 325, so I was quite pleased that she could double up on what she wanted. And then I was also at the community discussion on homelessness. After a long day of snow removal, counselling Helen Rice and other committees and duties that we had with the city council, I went off to the Riparian Setback Workshop as to represent council and seek out with the members of the community and see what kind of ideas are out there and how they were feeling about, you know, our setback matrix model that will be coming up fairly soon to tomorrow's community growth meeting. I also attended the airport board meeting, and I was honored to give the announcement today of our Crystal Centre concert for the homecoming weekend. I was privy to know who was going to be headlining or co-headlining, as it, as it stands now, for that show about 15 minutes prior to the announcement. But we're bringing in Tom Cochrane, Ian Tyson, Walk Off the Earth, Fred Penner, among others, including Natalie McMaster. I think it's going to be an incredible event. To highlight one extra special part of it, one lucky local musician or band is going to have the opportunity to play three songs on the same stage as all of those great Canadian talents. So it's an excellent opportunity for one of our many talented musicians in town. And, yeah, to finish, I'd just like to say tomorrow is a very special day for me. I wore my T-shirt for everyone to tune in tomorrow. It is Earth Day. In 1970, we actually started getting conscious about what we're doing to the planet, and there's a lot of good things coming up from our Esquire's Proclamation Day at the Montrose Cultural Centre, even Community Growth, where we enter into the discussion about perhaps creating an edible city. And that's all I got.
Any appointments you'd like to share with us?
Appointments?
Oh, oh. I guess Helen just, just reminded me. I, I got an email like late last week as well as an appointment to the AMA Council on homelessness as well. So again, as that was stated at previous council meetings, I'm honored to accept that role and to move forward with that. Just got to put in my resume and I guess beg for them to keep me on that committee as long as I possibly can stay on it, so.
Great news, Counselor Thiessen. Thanks very much. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. Just comment, I have nothing new, but a comment on a couple of the other things that have already been mentioned. The first is the airport capital, sorry, the airport commission meeting. And I thought the thing that was most interesting about that was the capital budget that was presented, both its substance and its cost. And like our own city capital budget, it's going to be an incredible structure, a struggle to actually implement that. The second thing I was going to mention was the tour of the Cairn on the park, and my wife Carol, and Carol went along with me to do that tour. And we were both super impressed by the building, by the range of options that there are available and there for people that need that sort of housing assistance. The final thing, I would never have thought in advance that I would mention this, but Counselor Edburn mentioned rocketball, and I can say with total pleasure that the first rocketball in Grand Prairie was a stretch of wall in the old Mount Rose Junior High School that a teacher by the name of Danielson and another one by the name of Jacobs created. And it wasn't much in the way of facilities for several decades after their work.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, a few of the events I went to, I'm going to clump three of them together, April 8th, 15th, 16th. We had a lot of council committee hold meetings. It was very, very busy two weeks for that. A couple of them, I just want to speak, well, to, the one was the all-day one we had, which was very important, and I, I found it quite exciting about the snow removal policy coming up and when it's going to be delivered by administration or presented to council because I was on the, quite heartwarming by it all and felt great about it, so I have to throw that out there. Another April 10th, I was at the Cairn on the boulevard tour. I'm bringing that up as well because over half the units are filled. And it's only opened the door in a month. And the only reason why they haven't had more filled, they're still working on the units. So it's going to be a full house there, and it's, for what it was built for, that's, that's very important. Another one would be a personal one. April 12th, I went to a former employer's funeral. I bring this up because his name was George Day. He used to be Timberwift Logging. He used to have over 100 individual work for him. He was one of the biggest loggers in Western Canada during his time. And he went, I think he took the risk from where he had mostly hand-fallers to going to mechanical, to heavy equipment, to bunchers, and he took that risk and entrepreneurship and became one of the leaders for many, many years. So I was there, and I had a heartwarming with the family, and I wish him very well. He was one of those ones that were ahead of his time, where at the time, they'd say, you know, "Be lucky you had a job. Be quiet. Do your job." He was trying to work with you and make you stronger, and, and even if you made mistakes, you still stay on board. So, thank you, George. On April 15th, I had my one-on-one with the city manager, Greg. All went well. He agreed everything I said, and he, he said I had the shortest list. So. And then April 16th, I went to an event. It was for the Grand Prairie Building Association. It was hosted by KMSC. Basically, they downsized their names from K and McVeigh and just shortened it up. And they've been in business over 90 years in the area. And what I found by talking to the lady from the Canadian Home Builders Association, they are booked till December. They have monthly, they're going to have monthly get-togethers like this, and this was at the Bear Creek Golf Course. And they're booked for the host till December. So it tells you it's really, really going well. And the other one I'm just going to throw out there, usually don't, but we had the Pursuit of Excellence meeting on April 17th, and it went very well, but I was kind of torn because they were having spaghetti. they were having spaghetti meatballs for all the hard work the snow employees of the city did at the service center throughout the winter, and I was thinking of spaghetti meatballs, but I can't be there, so.
Thanks. Thanks very much, councillor McLean. So I'll try to be brief. On Wednesday, the 9th, I hosted a young lady from here in Grand Prairie who is representing Alberta as Miss, in the Miss Teen Canada pageant, so Stacy Stainer. She's going to be representing Grand Prairie at that Toronto competition, and so it was a pleasure to welcome her to City Hall, show her around a little bit, and I took an opportunity to squeeze in an impromptu local government education session, but Stacy's looking to really enjoy this and represent her community well, so we wish her well as she goes out and competes on a national stage. I also participated in the tour of the Cairn on the boulevard, and on Friday, the 11th, I had a board meeting for the Alert Board of Directors. Alert is the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Teams, so a pleasure to serve on that committee and do that board meeting. Alert is dealing mostly with its future sustainability, as there have been some challenges around budget at the provincial level. I think we've seen that in a lot of different programs over the last while, but Alert is that combination of police forces, RCMP, and all the other municipal forces across the province, and certainly have seen good results, and will need sustainable funding to keep that up into the future. I also attended the 34th Annual Art Auction. Great to see the community support for the art gallery. It was also great to see a new city employee up on stage, Mr. Robert Stephen, the former executive director of the art gallery, was up on stage, I think probably for the last time, you know, helping direct traffic a little bit. Robert said that he had never before tasted the food at an art auction, because he was always too busy running around organizing things, and so it was the first time that Robert ever had a chance to do that, but it was great to see the community support for the gallery, and I think the gallery is going to continue to be a focal point for the community. I also attended and participated in the community discussion on homelessness, and had a bit of a conference call with our MP, Chris Workington, on Monday, the 14th. I was also at the airport board meeting to discuss the 20-year master plan, and on Saturday, Sunday, excuse me, attended the opening ceremonies of the Junior National Rocketball Championships. Thank councillor Adburn for making it out as well. I just wanted to highlight, too, that, you know, the rocketball was not a, was not always a inclusion in the Eastling Centre. If council members that were there remember the discussion, that was actually a late addition as we were going through design, because the community's existing courts were sold, and that building was converted to a commercial building, and so the community lost those courts, and the council of the day made the decision to include the rocketball courts in the Eastling Centre. And today, we have 70 youth from across the country here in our community, along with our parents and coaches, participating in sport, spending money in our hotels, and enjoying our community because of that decision, so it sort of highlights how facilities that you might not have expected end up having a return to the community. It was also great to see the national and provincial reps are very excited about the facility, excited about the opportunity to host future events here, too, so I think there may be a good opportunity for more national and provincial events at the Eastling Centre. And then this morning, I was also at the exciting announcement about the 100th Anniversary Festival Concert. So cool to see such a broad range of performers. I think there's going to be something in there for every resident of our community, and I would encourage everybody to look up the list of artists, and start Googling, and start to prepare for what is going to be the highlight of the summer. I really think, I think it's going to be fantastic. And congratulations to the 100th Anniversary Committee and the Crystal Centre, who've been able to rely on some relationships that they have with promoters, be able to assemble this range of artists. Great to see. I believe that was everything, and so I'll call our meeting adjourned.